All the the Board of Education meeting to order, welcome everybody back.
Yes.
Welcome.
Back in the routine, I hope everybody's had a great start to the year. Um, let's start as we always do with the question.
Light and please.
Let us choose a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry.
Yes, we get to start with a little bit of a celebration, so we have our current teacher of the year here this evening. So Diane Tobio, if you could stand up for a second, we'd like to formally recognize you. So this one was really fun and it was, it was really fun and it was neat that um many of the board members, you know, due to schedule were able to be there because they saw what we uh, how we kind of opened the school year with an Olympic theme and had a lot of fun with it, but the show uh was won by Ms. Tobio, who entered with the Trojan Head mascot on and worked each section of the crowd into a frenzy as Ms. Lemke introduced uh her and um it was just awesome. I mean, the energy was wonderful and it was really great to get us going. Diane teaches uh Spanish to our fourth through sixth graders uh in multiple elementary schools, so she sees just about as many students as anybody in the district. She's done so for nine years.
She has a number, how many, how many students?
Um, the last year is four hundred eighty-seven, this year four hundred ninety-two.
Yes. Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
That was a big number.
Yeah, and um so she has a a great impact, she spreads great energy. She uh in her speech really talked about community and fit with our theme of kind of the Olympics and terr- carrying the torch for kids. Uh, it was wild to learn a little bit more, you know, personally about you that the last time you were in that gym, you were speaking at graduation and Neil was the principal.
Oh, yes.
So it kind of, it kind of put things in in perspective. Um, so it was great, um, you know, we're so proud of you, re- really are in in terms of, you know, each year the teacher of the year really represents that teacher voice for us in this district in different forums throughout the state. Uh, and we know you'll be uh, you'll do a great job with that Diane, you know, you're super passionate about what you are, what you do, you're super committed and super dedicated, uh, and we're excited for you and you bring that positive energy and juice which we all need more of.
Completely inspiring.
Yep, it was, it was, so um from the gift cards,
Absolutely.
Yeah.
To the, the mascot, to the games we put the the staff through, it was really, it was, it was nothing short of brilliant.
Your games.
It was uh, it was a lot of fun, so congratulations to you, I look forward to spending the night with you at the Bushnell
Yes. Yes.
As you get honored at the state level, you have your family here tonight, so you have to, you have to do a few introductions for us, so go ahead.
I do, I was.
Yeah.
All right, well, first of all, I'm so grateful to be here, so thank you so much. Um, and the theme, my theme was community when I spoke at convocation, if you were there, as you said, it was just such a feeling of support and love and um there's no better way to continue that than to be here with four of the most important people in my life. This is my husband Alex, this is my mother, my father, and this is um our little one Ava, who is rolling her eyes currently, um.
I agree, I will.
Um, yes.
Yes, yeah. Overrated.
Yeah, very impressive.
I just want to say, I had so much fun at convocation and the the love and support has continued already into the school year and I just feel so grateful and so blessed to have had that opportunity. And if there's one thing I want to leave here tonight is that I just want that feeling of community to be used as much as we can because Simsbury is an amazing place, I grew up here, I now am fortunate to work here and um it really has helped me become who I am in so many different aspects and I hope that as a teacher, as board members, as community members, we all remember that the children are watching us and we need to lead with, lead with love always, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much.
You don't need to stay for the.
All right. All right, good to see you all.
Yes.
Bye.
Have a great night.
Congratulations.
So nice to see you.
The little one.
She's, she's. So funny.
That was fantastic. Thank you, nice meeting you.
She's nice seeing you. Nice seeing you.
And she, she really was, at convocation, she was just fantastic, just amazing.
Oh, that was fantastic. She was great. And that's the babysitter as well.
All right, all right, moving on to public audience.
Hi, welcome back, I'm Lori Boyko, fifteen O Cursed Road. I don't have much time and the board has been on a nice three month long vacation since the last June eleventh meeting, so I'll skip the pleasantries and encouraging words and get right to the point. Simsbury has a long history of painting a much rosier picture of what life is like here than is actually the case. We are exceptional at sweeping issues under the rug that shouldn't be discussed in polite company while virtue signaling that all is well in Stepford or Mayberry, when in fact, life plays out much more like the town of Fairview in Desperate Housewives. I bet no one here knows that Wilton, Connecticut, not unlike Simsbury, was the inspiration for the Stepford wives. It, it should come as no surprise that our schools have adopted a curriculum of actually indoctrinating students in how to speak while giving every student numerical social credit scores for personal qualities in the data portal that brand students with a digital footprint for perpetuity. What, it's not going in their transcript, you say? Am I the only one who's had my medical file data with personal information hacked despite all of the laws to protect us and assure our data is safe? Do you expect me to believe the outside vendors we use are more secure than the medical and financial companies that are breached daily? Recording social, student social grading scores needs to stop immediately. Did the Board of Ed even discuss or approve this, did I miss the public discussion and vote? In the first five school days, the high school students had no fewer than four sessions on how to use everyday speech to talk nicely to one another and to all be friends. First of all, I don't want my child to speak like some sing songy dystopian drone, that's totally creepy and compelled speech. More importantly, I don't want him to be friends with everyone. In fact, there are a very real number of people here in Simsbury I actually want him to stay completely away from, starting with the ones vaping and doing drugs in the bathrooms or mobs knocking the head of security to the ground, then celebrating it on social media, but we don't talk about that. Why in the world does a school district think it's their place to insist everyone befriend each other? Why are our schools spending their time teaching this social emotional nonsense when school achievement is abysmal? Where have the academics gone? Has the Board of Ed even authorized this everyday speech curriculum? Was it reviewed and approved by the curriculum committee and the board, when? That's required by law, you know, it's your responsibility. On August nineteenth, I requested copies of all the materials, minutes of the meetings in which the board reviewed, discussed and approved it and the cost to the district. I was offered a half hour meeting to discuss with the Director of Equity and Access who implemented this. I want to see the official review and approval. If this curriculum has not been previously properly reviewed and approved by this board, then the program needs to cease and desist immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Onward, uh, committee reports, communications, start with Josh.
Uh, nothing yet, uh, we are working on getting a September meeting, working with Neil and Katie. I'm getting something set up for the communications subcommittee to meet in September, so we'll have something coming soon.
Nothing yet at this time. Do you?
Of course, summer just kind of came by, went by, but um, so there, we've been, between Abe and Cat, Crick and NSBA, we've sort of had the time of the summer to to review a lot of things and sort of get a jumpstart in what's going on. So again, we're actually starting with some questions for the General Assembly candidates about educator workforce and state support and providing mental health services, school safety and security and a number of things, mandate reduction, of course, to be more to that. So these are things that we've been, we've been working on that we're going to try to um develop a platform and um because before you know it, January will be here. Um, on the Crick scene, we celebrated our fifth anniversary. Crick had received a big state grant for transition to teaching and um this program was great for teacher residency, residency candidates and so we've placed over a hundred and thirty candidates all around the state within the program. So it really is a, is um, you know, kudos to, to, to these, to these um residents that have pursued this track for, for education. So unfortunately, the state um has deleted the one point five million eliminated that at the end of the budget this spring, so we're going to see what's going to happen come, come January. And uh, on the national front, um, Congress is back in session for three, three weeks and uh, we're going to be starting again with some legal and advocacy, Title Nine, student privacy legislation, F C C full funding I D A, K, N K twelve, um, K twelve wages for, for teachers. So um, so that's where we are, so it's going to be a very busy fall, it's going to get by very quickly, but um if, if, you know, we're starting early as we always try to and move along, so um I'll keep you abreast with everything happening at all times.
Let me just interject for a second, just want to introduce Macy Getz, our student rep.
Oh, yes.
Just thanks for joining us.
Running right off the field.
Appreciate it.
Hi, sorry, we're just coming from Philhakina.
I got a lot of names.
No, no.
Congratulations, I was over there.
Thank you so much.
Big win.
Yeah, first home game, so.
Awesome.
Congratulations. First, sorry, thank you so much, sorry.
Congratulations.
No problem. No, it's fine.
We're not signature, we're good.
Keep moving around.
Thank you.
Put your hands up.
I am all set right now, great.
Thanks, Tara.
I am nothing right now, great to be back.
Absolutely.
More later.
Awesome. Neil. More later. This is Neil's favorite meeting.
Uh, yes, so I wanted to report that the Simsbury Fire Marshal's Office did annual inspections in all seven schools in August and was accompanied by our supervisor of maintenance and all issues were corrected prior to the opening of school.
Great, that's always good news. Katie, anything for us? Awesome. I told you, I'm still calling on you. Uh, is anything for us tonight?
Um, I have a few reports from the elementary schools, let me just pull up, let me make the wifi.
We can come back to you.
Yeah.
No worries.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to welcome everybody back, um, it was everything but a vacation over the summer, if you knew what was happening up in this office. Um, I just, I want to thank all of you for what you did over the summer, it was, you guys worked harder than I've seen, I mean, just certainly worked harder than I thought I was gonna, so um you had lots of meetings on lots of big issues that have been set up uh before us that we've all talked about as a board and I appreciate you all taking it seriously and, and doing everything. And we ob- we obviously tried to have a, we're gonna, planning on having a meeting over the summer, but that got pushed back for reasons I think we'll get into later, but um, just appreciate all the work you all did over the summer. Anything?
Thank you, um, so from the elementary schools, the middle school, high school, um, all the elementary schools have begun their encouraging words campaign and had their back to school assemblies, um specifically at Tootin, Miss Belmonte kicked off the school theme of we're better together and had their assembly, Central's having their PTO sponsored welcome back picnic on Thursday. Um, Latimer Lane, they're hosting a public building committee um for their monthly meeting, including a tour on Monday night. Um, and then they had, and then Terriffel had a welcome back picnic for all their families in open houses this week and Squadron Line's Curriculum Night for three through six, it was on September fifth and K through second is this Thursday. And then for the high school, the fall sports are all full swing. Um, students are doing well with new cell phone policies, Spirit Weeks, the twenty-third, the twenty-seventh, and our spirit rallies are coming up and we also introduced our students and staff to the new S R O, Officer Chris Cheon, so that's all.
Can I ask you a quick, just I, I, I'm glad you brought up the cell phone policy, I'm, I mean, how, and how's the reaction, anybody pushing back at all?
Yeah.
Are people seem to be okay with what's going on?
Um, I mean, from what I see, no one's really pushing back, I think, you know, the reactions more like, oh, when, how long is this gonna last? One of the teachers is gonna forget about it.
Okay.
But the teachers seem to be count, counting, you know, taking attendance, we all have our numbers, so it seems to be running smoothly. I haven't seen anybody having any backlash or anything like that.
Good, 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 no, good, no.
It's good.
With draws to culture.
Yeah, I think we're uh, we're good to start, yeah, a lot of information to share about the.
Awesome. Awesome. Good, awesome. Yep, great, and let me just say again, I applaud you guys, that convocation was phenomenal. First of all, we need pictures of our beloved superintendent riding in on the horse, but.
I have one, you might see, you might see one of those.
Excellent. But really, really well done, a lot of energy, that was great. But anyways, uh, first item on the agenda is the approval of our June eleventh meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June eleventh.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
I'll abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay, two abstentions. Personnel.
Yeah, always uh significant at this time of year as we catch up with um summer resignations, so well, that's where we'll begin for, for your action. Um, six resignations over the course of the summer, I'll try to categorize them for you. Bill Antonitis, our English Department Supervisor at Henry James, actually took an administrative position in another district, so congratulations to Bill. Um, Kelly Delara, who has been an art teacher with us at Tooten Hills um for a number of years, fourteen years, um, has things going on in her personal life that's gonna require her to take a step back from teaching for right now and Amy Joyce, who's been with us just two and a half years, um gave birth to her first child, so she has decided that that's going to be her work for a little while and not teaching. Um, Beck Levine, Melissa Nimmo and Erin Samansky are teachers who have just been with us for a couple of years and these are all um folks who took other jobs quite frankly closer to where they reside. So the motion is there to kind of cover the whole thing with all the tapes.
Somebody to.
I'll move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of William Antonitis and Kelly Delara effective June thirty twenty twenty-four, Amy Joyce effective June sixteen twenty twenty-four, Rebecca Levine effective July first twenty twenty-four, Melissa Nimmo, Nimmo effective July thirty-first twenty twenty-four, and Erin Samansky effective September twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, and one more that requires your action, which is um the clause in the teacher's contract that allows them to give us advanced notice of their retirement up to three years out. So Sharon Gagin, who has been a teacher at Henry James for the past twenty-two years, first as a health teacher, now as a family and consumer science teacher, um is looking to set that retirement date at the end of the twenty twenty-seven school year. Um, I will say it's been twenty-two years and Simsbury, Sharon tells me it's been forty overall. So, um, but she says she's got three more in her, so, there, here we go, and uh.
Legendary.
Yeah, the motion is there for your consideration.
I move that the Board of Education accept the notice of intent to retire from Sharon Gueyo effective June thirtieth twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
A second?
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything?
And then I'll just point your attention to the rest of the um exhibit, I'll be making some more comments about our new teachers. Um, you don't have to vote, vote to um appoint teachers um by your bylaws, so you can see um five of our seven schools added new faculty, we didn't have any at Terriffel or Latimer Lane this year, but um, you know, the, the list is there for um your consideration and I'll um make some other comments about our new teachers when we go to the opening report, so.
Can I say, I meant to ask you, just since those, uh, the resignations, the, six resignations uh were effective after the school year and pretty late, late in the ye- late in the planning year, right?
Yeah.
Just any, any issues filling the spots or any of that or?
So, yeah, we got, we got four of the six filled.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Um, we also have filled a, uh, one of the speech and language positions that you see on here. Um, we don't have the teacher in district yet because when you hire in August, another district can actually hold the teacher for the start of the school year, so we're using a substitute teacher until that person arrives and I'm still looking for another speech and language pathologist, so if you know anybody out there, send them my way.
Thank you.
So one vacancy out of all the certified.
That's great, appreciate that. Uh, review and approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar?
Yeah, that's over to me, so even though we're just at the beginning of twenty-four, twenty-five, we always approve the next school calendar a year in advance, so you do have a calendar there for your consideration for twenty-five, twenty-six. It was prepared in accordance to state guidelines, to our B O E school calendar policies, um, our union contractual working days, and we still refer back to the Committee Around Calendar Advisory, Terry, you're very familiar with that, from two thousand and nine in their recommendations. So it's in alignment with that and a format for which you are familiar, so there is a motion there for your consideration.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Oh, I make the motion to accept, to adopt the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Knowing that Tara would love to reconvene that, that committee anytime.
I, I really would not, thank you.
It's a long recess. Uh, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Uh, next up is the gift from the Central School PTO.
Yes, there's actually three gifts for your consideration tonight, the first one from Central School PTO. So just as a reminder, any gift that exceeds one thousand five hundred dollars uh requires your vote and consideration. So this first gift is a gift for new tables and seating, you'll actually see a picture of some of that later in the presentation of the opening schools report, but it was for the Central School Library Media Center, so there is a motion there for your consideration and the gift is from Central School's Parent Teacher Organization.
I move the proposed gift of nine thousand one hundred dollars to Central School by the Central School Parent Teacher Organization be approved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Absolutely, that's fantastic.
Definitely a need that we're very grateful to be felt.
Uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The second gift is relative to Terriffel School, so Lawrence Paul White is making a donation of three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars to purchased new basketball backboards for the playground that were severely damaged and created a, kind of a safety concern, so uh there's a generous donation for your consideration.
Move that the proposed gift of three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars to Terriffel School by Lawrence Paul White be approved and thank you so much to him, it's great.
Second.
Sorry.
Second. All right, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Bye bye.
Any opposed? Any damage in the school, is that what happened?
No, use.
I know, some of them.
No, I think.
Old age.
There's a hole.
Age, yeah, age.
Super.
Okay. Sure.
And then the final gift is for Tooten Hills School from their PTO, it's a gift in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars to offset the cost of the actual field trip.
Move that the proposed gift of seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars from Tooten Hills PTO be approved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I, I just want to take a second here, this is.
Yeah.
Roughly uh twenty thousand dollars that was just donated to us. I just want to make sure we convey that we appreciate it, we, we, it is not taken for granted. And that is, that is just fantastic, with all our thanks.
And the nice part, it was all for three different schools and three different um areas that were well needed in Central School.
Right. Yeah. Great, the uh, school opening report.
Yeah, so we have an opportunity tonight just to kind of hit on several key uh areas of our opening, so Sue is going to facilitate the first part of that, um, we'll talk a little bit about new teacher orientation, we'll talk about some of our recent achievement data, which we're really excited about.
Very excited.
And uh, Leo's going to talk about some personnel and a bunch of other information, some of the improvements we've made with building and grounds, but kind of a, a catch-all, catch-up of how we kick off the year, all right?
That's great.
Little try tag team here.
Yay.
Yeah.
So from the Office of Teaching and Learning, uh, people are asking for pictures of convocation and here are a smattering. Uh, convocation took a very fun theme around continuation of the Olympics and how are we going to carry the torch of excellence um as we continue to go for the gold here in Simsbury? So um, a host of different speakers, certainly Diane, I don't know if there was a picture of her there in the, in the Trojan Head, um, but very much a spirit rally and games, but with a serious intent about community and what we're all about. Um, I have to give all the credit to Neil, but we are talking about, hey, how do we symbolically have teachers carry the torch of excellence back to their schools and he thought of a great idea, I'm not going to steal all your stuff here.
I didn't know I had any thunder, but.
I just gave some to you.
Um, so we, in the personnel office, looked up the teacher in each school who had served the greatest number of years in the Simsbury Public Schools and they got to carry out a torch to lead their school back to, so, some of our very, very veteran teachers and it was very well received.
It was great, the way to kick off, we all received multiple comments walking around the schools the first weeks and just that it was a very uplifting, high-energy focused convocation, so it's a great way to kick off. So as we always do, we orient our goals and priorities for the year in our strategic plan and I always set these up in the three specific goal areas of student growth and success, our compassionate and caring school culture and our premier workforce. So I'm going to discuss more around achievement, uh, we look at the student achievement of all students and groups and grades and schools, so I'm going to give you a highlight of that. And as you know from spring updates, uh, we've had some curricular shifts at the elementary, right? Looking at new math materials, looking at the science of reading and legislative requirements around our reading approaches, so that will certainly be an area of focus and as members of the curriculum committee know, very uh glad that we have reinstituted a consistent curricular cycle of review and we look at different content areas from a K twelve perspective, we look at three in any given year and this year up for review is math, P E, physical education and wellness, as well as uh our library media, specifically our technology scope and sequence. So you'll be hearing more about that area in board meetings to come. Around our school culture, certainly you've heard a couple of times around our encouraging words and how do we approach all people with respect and kindness in our interactions and how we just go about our daily business, so that's very much a part of our school culture focus as well as our tiered intervention of support. So how do we know when students aren't hitting those uh marks of meeting or exceeding expectations yet? And what do we do about it to make sure that they are supported academically, behaviorally, socially? And then finally, premier workforce, as you know, legislative requirements um started a ball rolling around educator evaluation. Neil and I presented the plan to the board last spring and we have been working very hard over the summer to make sure that teachers are ready to go and that administrators are ready to go and that we are looking at areas where teachers are passionate about instruction, about assessment, about students and really making sure that we are providing quality feedback to them and supporting their professional growth and teamwork. So you'll be hearing more about these themes, again, linked to our strategic plan, but I always like to set the stage of teaching and learning in that way for you. So onto some student learning data, just as a way to orient the board to what are we going to be talking about. A reminder that we provide standardized assessments to students in grades three through eight and also specifically grade eleven. So in our grades three through eight, we're talking about the Smarter Balanced Assessment, ESBA. We dropped the C of consortium, so it's ESBA, I don't really like the way it sounds, but it is what it is. And then in grades five, eight and eleven, we assess relative to our next generation science standards. So you'll be hearing about more data relative to student performance in those grade levels and then of course for grade eleven, it's the Scholastic Apt And then of course for grade eleven, it's the Scholastic Aptitude Test or the SAT. So I'm gonna break down some of those results for you this evening and give you the opportunity to kind of ask any questions. Certainly as the high school and the middle school and elementary um look at their or provide their reports to the board, then you'll be getting some more detail. So this is meant to be kind of a higher look at where we're, where we performed and where we're going. Um, so I'm giving the ESBA data to you in two content areas, both in English Language Arts and in math. And I'm doing kind of a composite roll-up of our elementary and then our middle school. So the percentages represent the percentage of students who are at or above what we require as achieving the benchmark, okay? So for grades three through six, you can see that we are well positioned with rankings in our DIRG of number two and number three of ELA in math. Uh, ranks in the elementary level are climbing, and there's some good news. It's a correlation, I always say correlation does not imply causation. However, there is a strong correlation with those classrooms that participated in our Think Math Pilot and this math performance. We looked at it to a T, so we're really excited about that. Um, in the middle school, you'll also see the roll-up for both ELA and math. Uh, Mr. Baker will certainly be commenting more upon that performance. Certainly, we're not where we want to be. Um, the kind of linked-in and aligned news is that our instructional focus at Henry James this year is around digging into math. And as I just shared, we have a math curriculum review. So we are already working with the math leaders and the math department, um as well as the ELA department to say, all right, where can we do better? And how are we getting after that instructionally? So certainly more details to come, but that work is well underway.
One shift we talked about at the board and we've gotten away from a little bit post-COVID is doing a much more co- you know, we've been going out to the individual schools and elementary schools will give us highlights, but do a much more comprehensive overview of the elementary kind of data and performance. So we'll plan to do that with um, let's see, after the Henry James report uh comes in, because we have some really interesting things to share, I think, when you get into individual grades uh and looking at some of that data, particularly the early grades that are assessed uh with some of the shifts we've made, that achievement level comparatively to other districts is much higher than it has been. So the foundation now should be stronger uh moving forward with some of the shifts. So we're kind of excited about that.
I know I'm jumping ahead and I know we're only in week two of the school year, but obviously those rankings for the middle school aren't what we're typically used to.
Yes.
Um, can, can you give us a preview? Like what, what are we looking at, what's the focus, so we can climb back up?
Um, our specific focus is our instructional practices in our non-honors math classes. And that's where we're seeing where we have to do better with our data and how are we responding when kids aren't hitting those markers yet? And what are those best practices? So that's where we're really zeroing in our attention.
I think in particular that seventh grade cohort moving to eighth grade, the sixth grade cohort coming up, performance was very strong uh overall in the DIRG. I think it was second in the DIRG.
Yeah. Yes, it was second in the DIRG.
So, so you gotta make sure we're moving forward, holding and moving forward. You know, there'll be quite a bit to talk about and look at there.
So again, I'm sorry to keep poking at this a little bit, but. So it feels like the, if, if what you're saying, so the, in the honors, so if you're a high performer, you're fine.
You're still performing.
Yeah, you're still performing. I'm assuming if you're at the lower end of that spectrum, you're probably getting the attention you needed. So I'm assuming we're probably talking about sort of that student population kind of right in the middle then?
Yeah, and I think, yes, and I think when we look at that data, there is a pretty um developed group that are right at the fringe of hitting that marker of being at what we would consider our benchmark. So it's paying some close attention to that. What are some smaller adjustments that we can make to ensure they get over that goal line? And then what does that instruction look like for all? So we can make some growth movements that we just didn't actualize this past year.
Do you have the comparable data to of this exact from to last year?
I do, as far as the ranks.
Yeah, the ranks, and I would just be curious, like, it's interesting, like what those numbers look like for last year? If there, that sixth grade moving, like how did sixth grade do last year? And like why, it just seems much lower than it was, than it was in years past.
Yeah, it was, so we had a stronger cohort move to the high school, right? And we dropped about five percentage points in math overall, and we look at the seventh and eighth grade. Um, and we know in the middle school that there is quick turnover of those two grades. So to Matt's point, that sixth grade cohort, which is now seventh, is going to be strong. That said, we still have some work to do to say, where are our students not actualizing the skills that we want them to actualize? And really dig in and deep there in a, in a different kind of way.
And what are they missing going into high school? And are the high school teachers ready for it?
And, and arguably, it's not just a math issue though. I mean, ELA does reflect well.
It's about middle of the pack, it's not where you wanna be.
No, that's, we're usually higher there too.
You're right.
When we're comparing these numbers to other uh districts, are, are they say grade to grade or middle school to middle school? Like, cause other districts have sixth grade or even fifth grade in their middle schools, right?
That's a great question. So we have to tease out which middle schools are five through eight constructs versus six through eight and really go more of a grade-by-grade comparison, which makes the comparison a little bit tougher, right? Than if you're looking at, you know, pretty consistent three through six performance or one grade level for SAT, which we'll get to in a second at grade eleven. So we attribute for that, we just don't do middle school by middle school, but more grade-by-grade within those middle schools in the DIRG.
So I don't wanna bring up a touching conversation, but, or top topic, but years like when I first joined the board, there was talk of the sixth grade, and it's kind of been like lingering, moving up, hasn't happened for various reasons, right? I wonder just if that would help, like if that would.
A larger contingent.
Larger contingent, longer time in middle school, more reason, I mean, I don't know, just thinking.
Yeah, oh, it's one of the, you know, put it out, it's one of the areas that you wanted our administration to refocus on, right, and talk through. So we actually have a meeting with Techton on uh Friday, you know, to, to pull some of the schematic back out and organize the information and think about what type of conversations we would wanna have with who and where to bring that back to the forefront in terms of the capital focus, you know?
Yeah.
Um, my question, can we see this data broken down, like seventh and eighth, for example? Seventh grade and eighth grade?
One hundred percent.
And then also, and then elementary schools, are you know, are these consistent numbers across the five? Or are you noticing differences among the five?
So, can I answer that one?
Of course you can.
Elementary is pretty consistent, there's a few variances, and that's the report we're gonna bring to you later on. Like, I really want you to see what those details are and those strengths. You know, I have it all right here, I can get it to you in, in the Friday update pretty easily. Um, but I, I think of the seventeen markers overall across the elementary schools, we're within the top five in thirteen out of the seven, uh seventeen. So it's pretty um, it's pretty consistent. There's a few that are lower, science is a little lower that we'll see. Um, but the um, the early grades, particularly third grade, like in literacy, we've always struggled there a little bit. Um, much better performance now with some of the recent kind of changes we've made.
And the supports, because some of these kids, it's all the transition from the years they missed.
So, but we have all that data.
Um, and when is the test given? I can't remember, is it spring?
There's a window in the spring, yes.
Okay. Um, my next question's related to the SAT, so go ahead.
Great, I'll hit science first.
Sue, one thing on that, they already kind of hit on it, so I do think it'll be important, right, to see like that breakdown of seven and eight, but also like maybe two years back, a year back.
Yeah.
And that's right, like what's this trend going on, right? And all transparent, like my son's in that seventh going into eighth grade group. So I, I kind of, this doesn't really surprise me too much, so I know it's something that's like a focus of mine as well. So I do think it'll be interesting to see like where were we? Was there a dip? Are we bouncing back? Like, was this like a train was coming down the track or is something going on?
So we'll put that, we'll make all that a part of Scott's report.
So I think, yeah. Yeah, great, thank you.
Any Scott's report?
Second meeting of October.
October, second meeting of October, yeah.
So science, grades five, eight, and eleven. So again, you'll see the at or above benchmark and the DIRG ranking. So um, you know, as Matt alluded to, we're not where we wanna be in science. Uh, we have already pulled together our science team to take a look at what are we currently doing? What are the units of study? How is that taught? It's not taught with as many instructional minutes as your ELA in math. It's just how it lives, social studies is the same way. But with the instructional time that we do have, how are we maximizing that to teach into these skills? The nice trends that we.
You're talking about fifth grade.
Fifth grade. What we usually see in eighth grade is better performance, which we see here. So about seventy-five percent of our students are at above grade level here with a DIRG ranking of fourth. So that's also encouraging. And that makes sense, because when students are coming to the middle school, they have science every single day. Um, and then in eleventh grade, we're really proud of that science performance first in the DIRG. And that's been pretty consistent. We've been like one, two, one, and um we're really excited that we're ranked first in our DIRG. So.
That's great.
You know, we're continuously specifically at the middle of high school, looking at the alignment of curriculum, making sure that we are addressing the standards, addressing the performance expectations. So more to come on that.
Can I ask another thing on that? Could we, for the Friday report, can we see, like, how was grade eleven alone when they took it the fifth and eighth, and then eighth, how were they at fifth?
Mm-hmm.
And then, because it's kind of, I mean, it's interesting, but it's because it's different students, it doesn't, you know?
Yeah.
How is it basically similar?
You wanna see how that, you wanna see how that cohort's performing?
How is it refreshing, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. I have some nice context to these numbers.
Yeah.
So in the SAT, very excited about our SAT performance. So in both uh ELA and math, rank in DIRG for the, our DIRG, ranking of one and ELA in ranking of two in math. So these at or above scores, um these are based upon a, a measure that the college board says this is what it means to be college-ready. So this is a college-ready measurement. Um, for ELA, we've seen a, a significant climb of about five percentage points. And again, these are based upon the this year's graduating class, who took the SAT School Day last year. Um, and then for math, that DIRG ranking. So I do wanna point out that between one and two for math, it was point six of a percent. So it's amazing, isn't it?
These things are pretty tough.
So is that reading that right? So if we rank second in math, but only sixty percent of our students are.
It's interesting for context.
That's a bigger problem.
Yeah.
I pulled, I pulled, so.
I know what I'm thinking too.
Yeah, it's really interesting, so.
It's a much bigger problem.
Before we came in, I pulled the, you know, what's the state marker on that? Just to give some context, right? So, you know, we're eighty-five percent ELA, the state's fifty-five.
Yeah.
Sixty in math, the state's twenty-nine. So the spread between each is the same, but the overall performance.
I also want to note that college readiness score, maths is higher.
Yeah.
Okay, so math, you have to achieve a math score of five thirty in order to hit that benchmark where your ELA is four eighty.
Yeah.
So that's part of the discrepancy as well. Not all of it, but part of it.
Which is, which is a state-driven data. But it makes you wanna dig deeper into that a little bit, yeah.
Absolutely.
But we are very happy with how we are performing comparative to other districts. So exciting news, and more details to come in those school reports. Over to you, Mr. Sullivan.
All right, am I taking that?
Yes, sir.
First in high school in ELA, science and second in math. Hasn't been like that in a long time.
Since when? That's what he's trying to say.
All right, just had to get that in.
You asked.
Uh, if you think that convocation had a lot of energy and juice, you should have been here the week before when Ms. Lumke and I kicked off new teacher orientation with um twenty, but they're not all in the picture, but twenty fantastic um new educators uh to Simsbury. Here's where they're still looking fresh and excited on their first day um in Simsbury.
They're still looking like that.
And I'll take another picture today.
No, they're still looking like that.
First year's tough, but they're, they're all, they are doing great. Um, and it was, obviously, we start the process, I think I signed the first contract. Um, interviews usually start right after April vacation. So I think I signed the first one to a contract in um early May and, you know, up until the first day of new teacher orientation that we're in that process. This year's cohort of about twenty new teachers is what I've typically seen. We've had in the last two years, more like thirty-five teachers as new teachers. Um, and, and that is um similar to the trend of the state, that there was just more hiring happening in the last two years, more resignations from teaching force. So that represents um a little bit more than five percent of the teaching staff when you say twenty, that that is um a, a pretty good number. So uh, obviously, uh, the details about each of those are in that personnel report that I walked you through. Um, here's how we, yeah, go ahead.
I was just curious. I was looking at that when we were going through. There's some, right, with Sarah's experience to be expected, but there's, there's a good amount with experience coming in. Just curious, over the past, say, three, four years, when you're out there trying to get replacements, get hires, are you seeing anything reputationally trends, anything Simsbury in general? Is it getting easier, harder, are people gravitating? Like, what's kind of just like curious from our perspective? When you're out there trying to fill a role, what's kind of the vibe with coming to Simsbury?
Yeah, so I'll skip through to this, because this is a sign. So this is to have two-thirds of the teachers that we hired this year be zero to five years of experience, that's a little higher than typical. Um, we, we have, um, you know, certainly with, as we went through a tough budget in the spring, you're mindful of that as you go into like hire for new teachers, because you, it is one of the only ways to control cost around your personnel. Like, as, uh, and we talk about that during the budget process, that we budget for not hiring a top-of-the-scale teacher. That's not to say that we don't do it sometimes. You know, if a, if a top-of-the-scale speech and language pathologist walked in tomorrow and I have a vacancy, I'm probably gonna be more interested, um, because I, I can't fill that position. Where, where there are some positions that are still attracting enough pool, like if you put an elementary teaching position out there, you will have plenty of very strong candidates who are less than five years of experience. When you get to the secondary level, that's true in some disciplines, you could find plenty of social studies teachers, plenty of English teachers. You wouldn't find as many new science teachers, math teachers, they're harder to find. So the pools differ, um, and um there's been a significant turnover. I mean, a lot of the positions you'll notice are special ed positions. So across, we are tending to find um special ed teachers that we are hiring with a few years of experience in another district, and then they come here. Um, and, and um usually, there's two things that those of you who have done negotiations with us know. Our salary schedule is okay, but in Simsbury, you tend to get to the top of the salary schedule a little faster than you do in other districts. So it is advantageous for teachers who have a few years in to try to come to Simsbury, and they'll get to a, not right away, but they'll get to a higher wage faster in their career. Um, so this is by um experience, what we were seeing this year in terms of um what was coming in. I will say this, um ten years ago, when I started in this position, like the, the recruiting fairs were a really important way to go out there. They've become less important, just not COVID really hap- they weren't happening during COVID, and they haven't recovered. Like, the only one that really had, uh, UConn's fair kind of got back to where it had been this year, but the others are still struggling. Like, at Central Connecticut, there were not a lot of people. Like at Central Connecticut, there were not a lot of people at the fair. Um we have a minority recruiting fair, there were not a lot of people there. So there's that methodology, I think it's something that personnel directors need to think about cause it's just not how people are looking for their jobs anymore.
Yeah, thank thank you, Neil, that's kinda what I was thinking you were gonna be getting at. And I would just say, right, early first meeting, but you know, budget, all that, whoever needs to hear it out there, right? The things we've talked about going in, right? Now the numbers are, right? We talked about special ed, workloads, burnout, turnover, right? If you're starting to see a budget, sixty-seven percent zero to five, right? So they're saying things and but then there's the proof's in the pudding, right? Who's coming, who are we getting, what are we seeing, right? These aren't opinions, these are facts, so just kinda putting that out there, like early on.
Yeah. And then this slide shows you, um we are seeing more, we used to hire a lot of brand new teachers with just a bachelor's degree. They sten- they tend now, many of them, to stay and have a master's degree even before they take their first teaching job. There's a lot of like five-year programs to get a master's of ed before you even go look for that first job.
Yes. Yes.
And I would say that puts them into a different column on the uh uh quite a few, almost everybody in special ed kind of gets, they they earn a degree and then they get another master's degree in special education even before they come in. So that's that's what that one is showing. Um I could go backwards, cause I skipped new teacher orientation. So um we do it at had the nice library space at um Henry James. It's been a great place to hold it for the last few years. Um and we feed them a lot, the feedback about the food is always excellent. Um and uh we we have upped our game in terms of the swag that they get so that when they walk in on the first day of school, they could be wearing a nice Simsberry polo um and have their Simsberry coffee mug that they're drinking out of. So um we are very happy to bring back some of the teachers who sat in their seat the year before, who were new teachers the year before. They come in and talk to this cohort of new teachers and that's always a highlight of the first morning. Um we've run a number of sessions. Um Sue um does a guide guiding activity through the vision of the graduate as a foundational document that's gonna be um a big part of what they have to prepare for in Simsberry. Taya um and um a teacher from Tooton Hills School do uh an equity presentation. Katie Crsula does a special education um session uh and Dave Prinstein gets them their new technology and kind of walks them through it. Uh they also have orientations at their buildings and kind of a curriculum overview with a department supervisor at the elementary level, sort of Betsy's team. So over the course of three days, they, most of it's two days. Then we take um anybody who's in their first two years of teaching also has to do TEAM, which is the statewide induction program for new teachers. And uh Jan Sands, our team facilitator, does a morning, does another morning with those folks. And we actually started last year with letting them get through the third day. They have an opportunity to come back, get a final lunch. And then we just open it up to, all right, you've had a lot over three days, what's still on your mind? And we're really happy with what we're getting out of that final session to make sure that they're, you know, and they really feed on, this group fed off of each other. Um and um of course, we end, I should always say, we end the first day with the cultural tour of Simsberry, which is on the Salter's air-conditioned bus. We hit every quarter of Simsberry and finish at uh Tolmeto. Uh we can invite you next year if you want, nobody's taking any up on it, but we hit a, I I'm now referring to it as the cultural tours, but other things in the past.
Neil, I have a question.
Yes.
You said you brought back the cohort from last year um to meet with the new group. What are just some of the questions that that they were asking or the new?
Yeah, we bring back three teachers, we bring back one, like an elementary, middle and high school and they are a little panel. Um you know, certainly they um, we we do an activity where before that, we're talking about PLCs, professional learning communities. So they'll ask like what what does it really look like? They'll, they ask a lot about how did you get supported your first year of teaching? Like they wanna know who to turn to um.
What would you have done differently in your first year?
Yeah.
What do you think are the things that will set us up for the best success as a teacher, as a, you know, an educator here for a really long time?
Yeah.
Um but very thoughtful, reflective, genuine questions.
Yeah, I thought there will always be a question or two about like, how, what things do you do to make sure you're reaching out to parents? Like what do I wanna do, what do I not wanna do? Um so it's always, we get, we we do that, it's about a forty-five minute thing that they get to ask questions, it's.
Great. Is there anything that surprised you from year to year? Anything that's jumped out between some of their questions or comments and things or thoughts?
I I don't, not, nothing comes to mind this year, I mean.
Um no, and we we asked them for their feedback in a in a survey. They could fill that out anonymously or not, it's their choice. And that's what we use to make improvements on the next year and very, very positive feedback.
Yeah, the three the three days are, they, we do it on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday of the week before school. Then if they want to just come in Friday and be like in their school, in their room, getting set up, it's an optional day, but a lot of them do it. And then they come back in on Monday for convocation and they feel ready. All right, so that's sort of our new teacher piece, busy summer, uh bringing in twenty great new educators and one to go. Um and just, of course, you'll get my full October explanation, but I wanted to let you know where we are with enrollment. So you can see um overall from the last year, last year in the middle column, forty-one oh four was our district K twelve count. And we are thirty-five students less than that so far this year. This'll, that number will change by October first, it'll go up and down or down by maybe five students, but it will change somewhat. But on that first Friday, August thirtieth, when we took the count, we were at four thousand and sixty-nine, remarkably, almost exactly what it was two years ago when we were four thousand and sixty-four. You could see um it is uh virtually identical at the K six level. I will say um couple of interesting things. You'll remember that our last budget cut um to get to whatever number that we had set was that we were gonna try to only keep three first grades at Latimer Lane and um not hire a new teacher there which had been originally budgeted. We didn't make it, we had, we had enough move-ins that we did have to hire a new teacher. But based on the savings of the other teachers that we had hired at lower, like there was within budget to be able to do that. So we actually, even though it breaks that you have twenty, is it twenty-six? I can't read it from here, twenty-six fewer elementary students from last year to this, you have one more teacher just by the way it broke in the various schools um and um.
That's with the Tigo teacher going over?
And yeah, there's one more, there's an additional teacher at Latimer.
Yeah.
And the other interesting thing that we did, we watched kindergarten all summer long. Um and we were seeing very low kindergarten numbers, extremely low at Terriffill. And it ended up at the end of the day that there were only twenty-one kindergarteners in all of Terriffill School. And Squadron Line was pushing over into the nineties. So we actually, in late August, Terriffill is running one kindergarten section. And we moved a teacher to Squadron Line to give them a fifth kindergarten and make the class size. So it's how, you know, it's a proper use of the resources by your class size guidelines. And we'll have to, you know, hopefully, I mean, I would like to see some move-ins and, you know, I'd like to get back to two first grades at Terriffill, but we'll have to see what that cohort does.
Do we have the room at Squadron for that extra?
It's tight.
Any extra K class, I mean that.
It's what they, it's it's uh we moved a, we moved a preschool room.
We moved some preschool to Latimer.
I.
Oh, okay, so you took them out.
We moved the preschool room.
Latimer and opened up the pre-K for.
Yeah.
The additional K's.
Squadron has several grades with five sections.
Four, four grades.
Several grades with five sections.
I I definitely have a few comments and questions about the Terriffill thing. And so I don't know if you just wanna wait till at ten one
Sure.
or once we have the numbers, just because I I just wanna understand how we went and knowing that and knowing Squadron's already over, like did we consider like offering the parents to move or how would you do it? And you know, I, and it brings me to a bigger question of, and we can talk about this at ten one,
Yeah.
but that like for schools like Central or Squadron or Latimer that might have a difference, you know, like a grade three is four classes and then the grade four is five classes, how do they manage that teacher-wise every elementary year and?
Yeah, we can certainly talk about that. Um I, what I can tell you about the um Terriffill Squadron, I mean, we made a decision that Squadron needed a fifth. At the time, Terriffill was um, I think we moved, did it on the first week of uh August. And at the time, Terriffill was running with twenty students. And so we said, okay, we're gonna move it over to Squadron now. If it ends up that we need another teacher at Terriffill, we'll hire it. Like we'll hire a new teacher. So we were always prepared if that number did grow from twenty to something above class size guidelines, that just like we did at Latimer, we would add a new teacher. Now, over the last, I mean, we're now over four weeks since we made that decision and it only one kindergartner got added. So it's been, it it rode uh high teens all spring, then it settled at twenty all summer long and we made a decision. But yeah, we don't, we have not like said, hey, do you want like opening it up to parents, do you wanna go? That was not something we really considered.
And do we ever consider that? It's just because like we're talking four or five kids would have allowed for two classes
We did that.
That's no.
and some people at Squadron like, no.
Well, it would it would allow, it would have allowed for
For two sessions.
very small classes at Terriffill and still very large classes at Squadron.
Well, you're gonna have very large classes at Squadron no matter what, so four or five kids out of there.
No, they're actually, they're actually pretty good.
They're pretty teenage.
They're pretty good. So we we did consider it once, it was very late in the season, it's when we had no capa- uh capacity.
Yeah.
Um and we got no takers that late in the game to to try to do it.
It's a lot for a kid too.
It was a, I think it was a central, central Terriffill situation, but.
Parents.
We have to Terriffill at Central a lot.
So.
We can talk more about it at the.
Yeah, ten one, I've, yeah, and I'll certainly bring all of that and um.
You did.
So that was my elementary comment. You can see we're actually six eighty-three at the middle school, that's the largest our middle school has been in quite some time. Um that's three full teams at each grade level, so a little bit of a buildup at the middle school again. Um and what that, why that happened is because of very small class from eighth to ninth grade. So that's why you can see a high school number that's actually almost sixty less than last year. There's uh, I think as of this October, this August thirtieth, the freshman class, I believe the number was only two hundred and seventy-five students.
Wow. What is it typically?
More like three thirty, yeah, so it's a small group.
Wow.
And that's why that overall high school number is down. And you'll recall from the budget process, we led, we were sort of in a uh teachers went from the high school to the middle school to deal with this expected. So we have a number of teachers who were high school teachers, but now they're teaching two classes at the middle school to deal with this enrollment. So um.
Can I see a quick question?
Sure.
So if you go back, so for at least the last couple of years, right? We've been preaching enrollment is going up, going up, that, you know, we're using that as part of the reason for for capacity issues. Obviously, we're down, whatever that is, fifty. Sorry, I guess, and I can.
We got thirty-five from last year, yeah.
Thirty, thirty. Ah, I need a math class. Um so thirty-five from last year, which obviously is not terrible, but it's still down, right? Are you seeing, and I I can explain the bubble, I get the bubble, that's that's, are you seeing the increase in the lower grades? And and why I'm asking that is because, right, if if it is, if if you're seeing more of an increase in the lower grades, that number kinda takes care of itself, right, as that, as those groups rise.
So I think it's prohibitive right now. Here's my theory, the um especially in Simsberry, couples who are with children under five years of age are being priced out of homes here. And I think it's harder for young families to find that first home in Simsberry. So I think that is um while the real estate market heated up, we did not get a ton of registrations in here this summer cause I just don't think young families were moving in. And that is also from some of those teachers you saw that I hired, I would talk to them.
Uh-huh.
And they were like, I'm not gonna be able to afford to live here for a while, like that's.
And you have the kindergarten legislation.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
That we talked a great deal about, that the kindergarten cohort would have looked very different had that legislation not gone out.
Oh, yeah, that's true, that's true, yeah, yeah.
Which would have attributed for you would have been more of a flat now.
So.
It's a little.
So you see a, you see a, will you see a bump next year?
I think we'll see a jump.
Okay.
But we don't know, I I haven't looked at the projections, telling that careful.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's premature, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, and this number is lower than the projection and I'll show you all that on October's report. Um and I lowered Nezdecs' projection. So this is below the projection that I had already adjusted. So if we had gone with Nezdecs' number, this would have been way off.
So it's an interesting topic and it will certainly come up during our budget.
Yeah. It's just. It's about the show that projecting down the road is almost next to impossible.
It's tough, it's tough. Once the trend gets gets bumped, who's having babies, it's just a tough thing to reach.
Oh, I can't wait for October first, woo-hoo!
It is her favorite, she and Neil, man, it's her favorite meeting.
Give you.
I love that one.
I give you just enough to what you're.
Teaser, big teaser. Still to come, wait.
I have one more question to add to our list four to two.
Yes.
Um on our, the scores and uh such, could we see the third grade, last year's third grade testing? I'd be curious because A, I believe they are smaller group and B, they are the COVID babies or the kindergarten COVID kids. And so I'd be curious how they did comparatively.
Third grade performance?
Sure.
Yeah, third grade only.
So ELA.
Last year's third grade.
Last year's third grade, yeah.
Yeah. ELA was second in the DIRK. And math was smack in the middle of the pack.
Just curious, cause those are the COVID kids then, if there was any impact there.
But we, I'll.
They would be everybody's COVID kids, all districts COVID.
True, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Relative share.
Compared to like two years ago's third grade, you know?
Yeah, yeah. The the reading's higher than the temp of that.
That's what we'll build that tool to the.
But we'll dig into it, it's really interesting.
We had a very specific action plan and it actualized in the results for me.
So the current fourth graders were the COVID kindergartners?
It's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they did fine.
Yeah.
Jason, all right, so to jump into the facilities, uh before I start, I did wanna make an introduction. We have our new supervisor of maintenance here, Kyle Wilkren.
Good night.
Hi all.
And uh the reason I asked him to to come here was we had an extremely busy summer when it came to facilities between uh what was funded last year, the CNR dollars were up, we had some big CIP projects. This was, at least in my own recent memory, uh the most facility improvement projects that I've seen happen here in a single summer. And I do wanna uh point a lot of that success uh right here towards Kyle, did a great job.
Thank you.
Uh so we'll start over at Latimer, which is starting to look like a real school. The construction uh is moving right along, the project is on budget, it's actually ahead of schedule. Uh the instructional spaces are all online. The main office and nurses section is what's left to go, that's the under-construction part. Uh we're expecting to have substantial completion uh in October, towards the end of October and hopefully a ribbon cutting ceremony sometime in November. So this is coming along great.
That's great.
Uh we had our standard influx of Chromebooks, we added nine hundred and sixty-five to the fleet. Uh for instance, our freshmen in high school all get uh new ones and then move them. move them through for four years, and there's other grade levels that get new ones, and there's a whole cycle of who gets what each individual year. Uh, we've gotten this down to, I'd say, a pretty uh solid groove now as to how this this all works. Uh, we refreshed our copier fleet, so every four years we take out the old and bring in the new, so all of our schools have updated copiers. And we've completed our paper cut uh printer management uh uh system. So this is our teachers and staff ability to print something out, then walk over to one of these copiers, swipe their fob, and their job pops out, so if they go there and there's a line, they can go to the next printer and swipe it there. So it's called follow-me printing. Uh, the high school and Latimer were the last to come online, so now we have all seven schools uh using that that method. Uh, we had some security upgrades, so uh we have a project to uh refresh our cameras. We first started here uh with our, with our uh CCTV cameras pretty much when I first started here, about two thousand five, two thousand six was when this all started getting uh integrated. And we've got some uh analog cameras that are a bit long in the tooth that are being replaced with digital cameras, that project's been going on. We've also added some to uh some school buses, so that's, that's a new uh thing that we're uh we're looking at now. Uh, not all the buses, but we do have some. And we have uh replaced the fob readers at the doors of all the facilities uh that didn't have this particular type of reader. So there's four schools uh that now have the same type of reader that the other three schools have. So from a user perspective, really no change, the fobs always work no matter which building you went to, which door. Uh, but we were managing that behind the scenes across three different software systems. So now we have one uh, one system much easier to manage, uh much happier about that.
Is it less expensive to do it on one?
Uh, it's, from a maintenance standpoint, yes. The other uh company that we were using, we had a lot of issues with. The other three schools have uh virtually no problems once we went to them, so uh there's gonna be certainly some savings there. In maintenance.
Gonna save a lot of aggravation
Yes, a lot of aggravation.
by not working with that vendor anymore, one is not to be named.
Yes.
So, this is a, a project for way down the the line, but I'd be curious if the buses that have cameras, if you saw any cha- behavior changes.
I. Mr. Salter and I, uh, I've watched some interesting video. Um, they just went in in like April of last year, so we had a couple of months of, and um when you can be able to say to a parent, come watch your child on the bus, it's very, it it's potentially very helpful, but we're pretty new into it.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, it uh and it picks up a lot. They're very good cameras.
Do the kids know that there are cameras on the bus and they get told?
I, you, yes, they are told and you see them.
Yeah, they're not hidden. There are, there are five buses now in the fleet that have them, and the, the interesting thing about this and working with Salter is that if we do wind up with some particular recurring issue on a bus, we can just swap the numbers on the bus, and now that's the bus that has the cameras, so.
That's true.
So. Uh, and as I alluded to, we did do a lot of maintenance work this, this summer. So uh two roof replacements, the one at Terrafil will be wrapped up this week, there's just some flashing work that's going on. Uh, very non-disruptive stuff, someone just putting metal flashing on the sides of the roof. Uh, similarly, uh Central is having its uh wrap-up happening. The only piece that's gonna be left lingering to the end of September is the, if you go into the gym uh at Terrafil and you look up, there's that dome, that skylight kinda dome. Uh, that's had a longer lead time to get in, so uh towards the end of September, they're gonna replace that dome, then the roof will be done. As far as disruption, there is no disruption going down uh roof-related, those projects are effectively uh wrapped up. Uh, we had a major plumbing overhaul at Tuton Hills, this is a sort of phase two of a three-phase uh capital project, replacing cast iron pipes and such in that building. Uh, a lot of work was done over the summer there to accomplish that. Uh, Central, which had our, some of our oldest existing wiring, so some of the old cloth-covered copper wires that you'd see, uh round fuses, those types of things have been replaced with new wiring there. Uh, that project is just about done, we had one piece of equipment, uh some gear that's coming in a little later on to wrap that up. Again, not disruptive, just to finish up the project. And then lastly on this slide, some heating, ventilation and air conditioning, our HVAC improvements. Uh, at, we're at uh the high school, Central, Terrafil and Squadron, we were actually able to reallocate some equipment that came out of Latimer Lane just before we started uh the renovation there, so we pulled out some AC units and heat pumps and things, and were able to do some improvements at the other schools.
That's great.
Uh, painting and flooring, and if if you saw nothing else when you walked through our schools, this made a big difference. Uh, there were about twenty different locations that got paint and about twenty different locations that got new flooring. Uh, in some cases, those overlapped, but not all. Here's two pictures where they did. So that's a hallway at Squadron on the right and the library at Central on the left. Uh, the, the locations are are looking absolutely gorgeous at this point. And last slide upcoming, so as I said, our, our Latimer Lane renovation is still on going into the school year, but by uh November, we'll be having a ribbon cutting, so I'm looking forward to that. Uh, on the docket for, for uh planning, we're looking at adding four grass fields. If you're behind the high school where the modulars are and looking out at those fields, we're looking to put four soccer field-sized grass fields in that area. Uh, so we're getting pricing on that uh right now. Uh, we've, in our six-year plan, put in for some paving improvements at uh driveways, parking lots, sidewalks. Uh, we do have some, some crumbling paving work to, to work with, so we're going to be asking for that in the upcoming budget cycles. Uh, also, there's a new Connecticut statute regarding how often we do assessments of our HVAC systems. So the first two of those assessments are taking place now, and we expect that uh there'll be some improvements to look at there, so those are gonna be some improvements as we go. And then some other six-year capital things in development. Uh, the Tuton Hills partial roof replacement is coming up this summer, that was something that was funded last year, but it just takes time to get through the state process and and get that working, so that's an upcoming piece. Uh, also, we're hoping to do some parking lot playground line striping, so striping the basketball courts and striping the, the parking spaces. Those kind of line drawings. Uh, the high school amphitheaters seating and flooring is a project for uh this coming summer, it was just a matter of the lead time on the chairs, so the seating will actually happen coming summer, although it's already funding approved. Uh, we do have two new school buses and one van on order. Uh, again, funded previously, but on order, it takes a long lead time process. Basically, by the end of this coming school year, we'll be seeing those uh join the fleet. And then lastly, some long-term planning, which was alluded to earlier. We're starting discussions again about potential for putting the sixth grade into Henry James, and we'll see where those, those talks lead.
Can, can I just, I just wanted to point out, on Latimer, I just, I greatly appreciate all the work you and the entire team has done. I think two, just two important call-outs that you mentioned, one, we're coming in ahead of schedule, that is if you, anybody knows today's construction rule, that's uh not the norm, so I greatly appreciate that, and I love what you said about taking out, we were able to repurpose some of the, the HVAC, uh, uh, you know.
Access.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, in, in machinery or infr- infrastructure there, that is, uh, you know, that's, that's greatly appreciated and 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 what a great way to repurpose all that stuff.
And a significant furniture redistribution to other schools. That.
That's great, I mean, just, you know, we get asked a lot about
Never went into that slow.
using tax dollars wisely, and this is a, this is a, a great example, that's a thank you.
And I, just another maintenance shout-out, the uh, the ability to move that equipment and install it. Uh, we installed it, the maintenance crew has that level of uh experience.
That's great, yeah.
It's for that building.
Sorry, John, didn't mean to cut you off there.
I just had a question for you, two questions, one is on the SHS grass sport field.
Hmm.
Are you thinking of cutting down the trees? Those are fields out there already.
Oh, they're, they're fields, not in the sense of soccer field where you tell it and get to, yeah, this is lines, yeah.
Playable fields, redoing these irrigating, um. Really improving those spaces.
So yeah, the, it's within, if you did an overhead picture, I, I should have thrown a slide in, but if you did look at like the Google Earth shot of it, you see where the field is.
Yeah.
It's an overlay that fits right within the existing space.
So where are the existing field and baseball field that are back there, whatever, would be like just redone type thing, that should actually be playable, because a lot of that stuff to the right.
Yes. You only have one irrigated area.
Yeah.
Has there ever been like a, a comparison to, to whatever that cost is to say, hey, what would it cost to put in a second like turf, like a practice turf there? What would that cost be versus?
It's, it's interesting, that's.
Because a lot of schools have a second turf option, whereas we use the, the main turf for everything from three thirty to like nine at night, it's like boom, 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 boom.
The, the discussions actually went in the, the opposite, they started looking at the cost of a second turf field and sort of morphed into
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
the discussion of having four.
The reality is with the second turf field, you'd actually need lights.
Yeah.
The second turf field doesn't give you more capacity in the area, right, it gives you that one area that then you gotta
Yeah.
run throughout. What we're really looking to try to do with the expansion of these fields is get our practice times regulated a little bit more, so we can practice after school.
Yeah.
Instead of going home and coming back. And get out, and that's how we have stacked up that turf field, and half that turf field is just, I think, become
Yeah.
a real challenge for not only the kids, but the coaches, you know, you're practicing one day
Teens.
Yeah.
two forty-five, the next day eight o'clock at night, and it just, I think we gotta get better, better with that, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely. Great. Thank you for the question, Jason, on kind of Jeff's point about the budget and things.
Yeah.
The fleet, two vans, one, two buses, one van, the outgoing members of the fleet, do we sell those, do anything with those? Do we get any kind of money back, even if it's low on the backend of that? Are they like too old to even like do anything?
Uh, no, they're, they're, uh, I forget the process exactly for, for the, we actually have to certify that they've been destroyed, so they, they are. It's, it's, there's not a reasonable argument.
And.
Mark Salter strips every piece of
Usable part.
non-useable part off of every one of them.
And scraps, I guess.
Yes, he's unbelievable.
And Neil, this might be a ten-one question, I don't remember, but the bus, the buses, my other question was about the buses, is that did we have enough bus drivers and this kickoff of school and the routes were all the same as last year?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm just curious.
We, well, we certainly um, we had the same number of bus drivers as last year, and we had enough to start the, yeah, so we did not, uh, last year we had monkeyed around to lower two routes.
Yeah.
And we kept twenty-six routes this year. So, we did very little change of the bus stops and the routes, which paid dividends of not getting very many complaints about the bus stops and the routes.
Correct, I would think so.
If something has changed in, in, because in a good way, because whenever I have to drop any of my kids off at the high school over the last few years and they come back to my house, that's, that's firetown, I, in the past would just get stuck with a line of cars going to Henry James at seven twenty. That is not the case anymore. More kids in the middle school must be taking the bus or something is, it still hasn't, I haven't seen it at the high school so much, there's still a lot of traffic to get there, but the middle school has changed, from what I've seen.
Yeah, we, I don't know the exact date, but there's a day coming up, usually about three weeks to school, into school, where we do a ridership count for a day.
Yeah.
We do like three days of it, and then it doesn't, JR will compare those numbers year over year to see, so I can probably grab that data.
We'll bring in at the eight-one, at the ten-one meeting.
I would.
I can see it great.
I would like that data too, that would be very interesting.
You sure, sure, sure.
Okay, our ten-one meeting is now gonna be, gonna be a two-day event.
All right, can we, can we move on?
I'm so excited.
Can we move on? I'm really excited, everybody's excited for this first meeting, but can we move on to policy now? I forgot I still have one policy.
Okay, sorry, I'm flipping through my book here. Um, so just a very minor item, this, this was um a second reading for policy, you'll recall that the um coming out of the workshop that we ran in the spring, there was the idea to form another um committee of the board, which was a finance committee, which then required us, a, a standing committee, I guess, of the board, um, and that required us to go into the bylaws, write a little description for what the finance committee would do. We presented that in a first reading at the June meeting, and then this is now the second time it comes to you. So if you have that um exhibit in front of you, it's really just the language under E of, for the finance committee that has changed, and everything else is pretty much the same. Um, and then you will be able to vote on that on September twenty-fourth in order to hold the first meeting of that committee probably early October.
I think we have committee assignments on that agenda too.
Yep.
So, you know, squared, ready to go.
Great, thank you.
No, you need nothing, you can vote next time.
Any, any questions? Uh, public audience.
I was actually not gonna stay, so I know you're all thrilled that I did. I have to say, we did deliberately choose to move here for the strength of the schools many, many decades ago. The academics of the schools, and we've paid much more in taxes as a result than we would have if we lived somewhere else. That being said, I don't really care if we're beating our dark. I care when we're falling in the dark, but I expect us to be at the top of the dark in our town, that's what I expect. No matter what the rest of the state is doing, not having forty percent, when I look at this, I see more than forty percent of our seventh and eighth graders are not at or above goal in math. In, in Simsbury, forty percent. Forty percent of our high school kids are not college-ready in math. So, no matter what the rest of the state is doing, it just tells me that other towns are failing to educate their students in math and other subjects more than we are. And that's not good at all. I can tell you when our college readiness numbers percentages fall, that impacts college acceptances, which I know every parent in this town cares about. This reinforces what I said earlier about instructional time. Professionals and resources being spent on emotional, emotional and social coddling. That time should be being used on academics. The money and the professionals should be being used on academics, that's what we send our kids to school for. What I see from a longitudinal perspective of over twenty-one years with a student in Simsbury schools is that we have exponentially shifted money and teachers and even the curriculum to address special needs and are really allowing the majority of students to fall by the wayside. AP kids seem to be okay, and everyone in the middle is getting squeezed out. And that needs to change.
Anybody else? Great. Uh, we go into executive now. We need a motion.
Yeah.
I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Go into executive session.
Go into executive session.
Okay, you get a second?
I will second it.
All right, we're, yeah, we're going.
My.